Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. I'll invite councillor Baxter to speak.
Thank you, councillor. It has been a bizarre year, I think as councillor Mackay has said and yourself have said as well. It's important every year that the Lord Mayor puts their own stamp on being the Lord Mayor. And I think you'll certainly have the acolyte of being the Lord Mayor during the pandemic. And that's maybe not a very welcome legacy, but it's something that you had in your ear. And I think certainly after the first meeting, I think diplomatically it would have to be said, you had a baptism of fire in your very first council meeting. And you certainly had to learn the starting orders and look to the left and look to the right to see what to do next. But I think after that, I think everybody said it, members of staff and even councillors, right across that you learned very quickly and come to the next meeting. You came on leaps and bounds in terms of chairing the meeting. And I have to say throughout the year, you chaired the meeting very well, even clipping councillor Mackay's wings on occasion when it had to be done. And I have to say that you've done it very impartially and you've done it very well throughout the year. Yeah, a very bizarre year, you maybe didn't get the groups in, but I think that was just the nature of the circumstance we're in. But you raised a fantastic amount of money for Macmillan. And charities have suffered quite a bit this year, so to raise 15,000, I think you'd say. And members, I promise I will be prompt. From the outset, I would like to acknowledge the difficult year that we have had. The many people within our borough who have lost loved ones and suffered severe illness during this pandemic. Hopefully, there are better days ahead with vaccines offering a roadmap out of the pandemic. We had a very stark warning from Shane Daven in January as a position in ABC. And to see the progress we have made is fantastic. It has been a real honour and privilege to serve as Lord Mayor of Armagh, Bambridge and Craigavon. And it will undoubtedly be the pinnacle of my political career. And the memories I have of the year will remain with me forever. I'd like to thank my wife Wendy for her support during the year, especially as she had to do her own work at home, as well as homeschool the children, which was no mean feat. Also to my kids Catherine Thompson Connor, who had varying degrees of enthusiasm for their dad being Lord Mayor. I would like to thank them for appearing in the Christmas video somewhat reluctantly. I would like to thank my Sinn Féin party colleagues for nominating me to the post and for having the faith in me that I could carry out the duties of the role. To Susan and April in Lord Mayor's office, my heartfelt thanks for keeping me right during the year and ensuring that I was in the right place at the right time. I really would have been lost without them. I'd also like to thank councillor Kyle Savage for performing the role of Deputy Lord Mayor. Whilst both our roles were greatly curtailed during this year, I am grateful for his assistance. And I feel our joint message around COVID was particularly effective. My final thanks goes to the entire staff of the council. As Lord Mayor, I got more of an insight into the workings of council than I would have as a councillor. I was never failed to be impressed by the commitment and dedication of all our staff and each and every employee of this council. I extend my gratitude. It was a very different year. There wasn't a sausage roll or chicken gougon eaten in any of our civic buildings during my term. And it is regretful that I did not have the opportunity to bring the many different sectors that have looked after us during the pandemic. However, I did make sure that I got out and visited as many places as possible. And I was struck by the efforts that all our communities across our borough made to support their fellow citizens over the year. The onset of the pandemic brought an increased sense of community and helped foster better community relations. I was very impressed by the commitment of those who ensured that many in our borough were provided with a lifeline in their time of need. At the AGM last year, I stated that my HRD would be Macmillan Cancer Support. I had real fears about being able to raise any money at all during the year. I feel it's appropriate to highlight the role of Susan Parks, April Robinson and Neela McVie in raising a fantastic £15,000. They really had to think outside the box in terms of fundraising and were very inventive. I would like to thank each and every person who donated to this worthy cause. During my term, we opened the St Luke's Later Centre. And I have yet to meet anyone who's not been impressed by the fantastic facilities on offer at the site. Our play strategy has continued and I was very glad to be able to open some of our building new parks. As we come out of the pandemic, there will be many opportunities for this council to grasp in terms of improving the economic and social wellbeing of all our people. As my term was coming to an end, our chief executive and I met with representatives from other countries that are hoping to increase economic and cultural ties with our borough. I conclude my remarks by thanking all the parties and councillors for their support over the last year. And I'd like to wish the incoming Lord Mayor and Deputy Lord Mayor a successful term in office. As I said at the start, it has been a real privilege and honour and I know that they will enjoy the year ahead. We are the best people in our borough and we need to continue to do the best we can for them. So members, that's me and thank you very much. Sorry folks, I thought that was me. I'm not going away that quickly. So I'm just going to bring tributes from the floor. So I'm going to start off with councillor Magill.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. So this has been an unprecedented year for everyone and a difficult year to take up the role of first citizen of the borough. But councillor Savage has taken the challenge in his stride. From the very start, he set out to stall that he would be a Lord Mayor for everyone and that he would rise above the divisive acrimony that all too often has belated this council. Despite the restrictions which have been in place throughout his year in office, he has been a very visible Lord Mayor right across the various communities that make up our borough, visiting the many community groups, DEA clubs, sports groups, et cetera, who helped out with the community response in those very early months of the pandemic, visiting businesses as they prepared to begin trading again and fronting up many council-led initiatives throughout the pandemic. All of this while continuing to carry out his responsibilities to his constituents in the Bambridge DEA. When he took up the post, I mentioned he was the first person from the Tighnevin Estate in Lurgan to hold such an office. While Kevin has done his Tighnevin roots proud and hopefully will inspire other young people from similar areas to reach the same heights. Kevin has used his year in office to promote his charity, Macmillan Cancer Support, a charity he holds dear. And I have no doubt his work on their behalf is much appreciated. He has also been very generous in the support of many local community groups, which is always appreciated. So Kevin, my how, you have been a fantastic Lord Mayor and set a very high bar for your successor. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Magill. I'll invite councillor Baxter to speak.
That's awesome, mate. Thank you, outgoing Lord Mayor. It has been a bizarre year, I think, as councillor Magill has said and yourself have said as well. It's important every year that the Lord Mayor puts their own stamp on being the Lord Mayor. And I think you'll certainly have the acolyte of being the Lord Mayor during the pandemic. And that's maybe just maybe not a very welcome legacy, but it's something that you had in your ear. And I think, well, certainly after the first meeting, I think diplomatically, it would have to be said, you had a baptism of fire in your very first council meeting. And you certainly had to learn the starting orders and look to the left and look to the right to see what to do next. But I think after that, I think everybody said, members of staff and even councillors, right across that you learned very quickly. And come to the next meeting, you came on leaps and bounds in terms of chairing the meeting. And I have to say, throughout the year, you chaired the meeting very well, even clipping councillor Magill's wings on occasion when it had to be done. And I have to say that you done it very impartially. And you done it very well throughout the year. Yeah, a very bizarre year. You maybe didn't get the groups in. And you'd want to get in, but I think that was just the nature of the circumstance we're in. But you raised a fantastic amount of money for Macmillan. And charities have suffered quite a bit this year, so to raise £15,000, I think you said, for Macmillan's a fantastic amount of money. And all credit to you and for doing that. So I just want to wish you well as you come back to the back benches and wish you well and your wife Wendy and of course the kids as you come back. So thank you.
Thank you very much councillor Baxter. Bring in Alderman Spears.
Lord Mayor, may I, on behalf of myself and indeed my own Ulster Unionist Party, you've had a quite unusual year. It has been a totally unusual year for everyone. It's certainly an unusual year to be Lord Mayor of anywhere. And it certainly was, we started off, no doubt, in a sort of a baptism of fire, as it were. You had a few fairly rough meetings, which I must say you handled particularly well. It wasn't the easiest of situations on many occasions that we were faced with. It was a new reality of meetings by Zoom, by remote control, so to speak. And people from different parts of the community, different representatives, speaking in different ways, from different standpoints. But by and large, as Mayor, I do believe you did reach out in a wider sense across the community in particularly difficult circumstances. And I say very unusual circumstances to what we were normally used to. But certainly I wish you well in your future, in terms of when you leave and get a life back, so to speak, and get out and about again in a normal life. I wish you well and thank you for the contribution that you made to not only the council work, but indeed in the wider community. So thank you and wish you well.
Thank you very much, Alderman Spears. Councillor O'Hanlon next.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and thank you for your leadership during the last 12 months. I think Alderman Spears referred to meetings via Zoom. But I think he brought your message to the communities we all serve on a more digital platform and reached out to many, both you and the Deputy Lord Mayor during your year in office. It might have been a different year, but all the same, it will be very memorable for you. And can I wish you, your wife Wendy, children Catherine, Thomas and Connor, all the best in the years ahead. And as you move to the back benches, it's maybe a time to get your own back on some of those who give you a bit of hassle over the year. And I think it was councillor Baxter referred to Liam. But I think in fairness, you called a few others into line, including some in councillor Baxter's own group. So you were impartial in that regard right across the chamber. Before I finish, Lord Mayor, I hope you don't mind if I welcome two new colleagues to the chamber tonight, in councillor O'Neill and councillor Tolman. This is the first time they've been in a physical meeting and I want to welcome to the group. And so thank you.
Thank you very much councillor O'Hanlon. And it's very welcome to have the team of councillors in the chamber for the first time after six months. These are very welcome. I'll now invite councillor Brian Hope, Mr.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I would like to congratulate you for actually getting through what has proved to be a very tough year due to the pandemic and also for your hard work in supporting local businesses and communities affected. At last year's AGM, my colleague councillor Lavery said that your year was going to be a challenging year. And it certainly proved to be that in our borough. As Chair of the Economic Development Regeneration Committee over the last year, we carried out a number of joint visits together. And I certainly recall a very successful visit to Armagh Markets when the sun came out and we got a very good reception. And I appreciated your professional and courteous approach to these engagements during this difficult period. So thank you for your work and I wish you all the best.
Thank you very much councillor. Finally, I'll bring in councillor Barry.
Okay, thank you, Lord Mayor. Could I also reiterate what has been said by fellow colleagues? I would also like to thank you for your year in office. And I do believe that whilst we've all said it has been a difficult year, I do believe that you rose to the challenge of that particular year. And I believe that all our meetings were chaired with great respect and ability. And I do believe that you did provide that stable leadership at a time when clearly the area of the ABC needed that stable leadership. And I would like to thank you for all your hard work down through the year. Of course, you didn't get out to the community events and organisations as you would have liked to. But you were still out there, you were still clear and visible in relation to all of the social media and every aspect that followed with that. So I would like to thank you and wish you and your wife Wendy and your children all the very best for the future. And also commend you for obviously the charity, Macmillan Cancer, for the tremendous amount that you managed to raise during this pandemic. Raised for that, of course, I knew your father better and I knew you had to start because my father and your father worked together for 30 years in a shoe factory. So we know the families well and I would just like to thank you and wish you all the best for the future.
Thank you very much. After the previous false start of me trying to escape from the chair, I think it's now my time to depart. So I'll just get my mask on, members. And thank you very much for your kind words.
Good evening, members. We now move on to agenda item four, which is to agree the appointment of positions of responsibility. And the first position of responsibility to be appointed this evening is that of Lord Mayor for the incoming year. And the position of Lord Mayor for this year falls to the Ulster Unionist Party. And I would call on the party's nominating officer, Alderman Spears, to provide a nomination for the position of Lord Mayor.
Chief Executive, on behalf of myself and the Ulster Unionist Party grouping on this council, I have the utmost pleasure in proposing the name of my party colleague and friend for the office of Lord Mayor of Armagh City, Bambridge and Craigavon Borough Council in the name of Glenn Barr.
Thank you, Alderman Spears. If I could invite Alderman Barr to come forward to the top table and to sign the acceptance of office.
Good evening. First of all, I'd like to thank the outgoing Lord Mayor, Kevin Savage, councillor Kevin Savage, on, I'm not sure where you are, on a fantastic job that you've done. It was a challenging year for yourself and your family. And I hope you enjoyed your pink gin last night. To the outgoing Deputy Lord Mayor, I think your father would have been absolutely proud of you. And you've certainly left a legacy for future generations. And thank you for your service. Alderman Spears, thank you for your kind words. And I really appreciate your nomination tonight. Alderman councillors, chief executive, service moms, ladies and gents, I would like to express sincere thanks to my party colleagues in the Ulster Unionist Party for nominating me to the position of Lord Mayor of council. It is a great honour for me to assume the role and I thank them for giving me the opportunity to lead the council at this time. These are challenging and unprecedented times. I would like to thank the huge number of volunteers and frontline service workers in all sectors who have done so much to keep our communities going in the face of the COVID-19 pandemic. Your efforts have been truly inspirational. While we remain in uncertain times, there is no doubt that we face many challenges ahead. I am committed to use my time as Lord Mayor to continue to support the economic wellbeing of our small business sector and local retail sectors. With the strong support of our elected representatives, I am confident that by being stronger together, we will help sow the seeds of recovery and that we will emerge from the pandemic as a strong and united community. As a council's veterans champion, I would like to pay tribute to servicemen and women, both past and present. Thank you for your service. I intend to hit the ground running and embrace the year ahead. And I appreciate an open door policy. You are very much welcome at any time. I would like to thank the electorate of the Bambridge DEA for their continued support. And I hope that being the first unionist from Bambridge to hold the Lord Mayor's position, that I do you proud. I am aware that not everybody will be celebrating the centenary of Northern Ireland in the same way, or not at all. However, I will be reaching out to all communities and promoting the best that Northern Ireland has to offer in terms of the free healthcare at the point of delivery, our economy, our sportsmen and women, to name a few. As Lord Mayor, I have the honour of choosing the Lord Mayor's charity for the year. There are so many that I hold dear and mean so much to me, such as veterans charities, mental health, the food banks and the hospice. My charities for this year are going to be Angel Wishes and the Guide Dogs for the Blind. I also will be supporting as many charities as I can throughout the year as possible. I would also like to thank the main person in all this for supporting me and carrying out the role of Lord Mayor, and that's my wife Andrea sitting at the back. As family is close to my heart, you will be seeing my wife Andrea and my children Alex, Cody and Billy more over the next year. Please bear in mind that Billy's only two and a half. So if you see him kicking and screaming, please pay no remarks. Thank you very much, members.
Thank you. Welcome remarks from the floor, Alderman Ian Burns.
Lord Mayor, Deputy Lord Mayor and fellow councillors, it gives me great pleasure, as your party colleague, to congratulate you on becoming Lord Mayor of the borough. I've known you a long time and not only are you a colleague, but you're also a friend, someone that I would find would be close. I'm delighted that you have been elected to the position of Lord Mayor. I know that you will do a great job as you're in your year in office. I know that you work hard for the public and that is reflected in the electoral results that you get. And I know that you're very popular there. I know that you have served not only the community in this role, but you have served the community in other roles. And for that, we thank you. I have no doubt that throughout the year, you will do an excellent job. And I look forward to working with you, not only as your colleague, but also with you as Lord Mayor. I wish you well in your year of office. And as I said, I have no doubt that you will do a good job and you'll be a Lord Mayor for everyone. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much Ian. I'd like to call upon councillor Mark Baxter.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and on behalf of myself and the DUP, congratulate you on your elevation. To Lord Mayor, I have to say this year, maybe more than others, it was all kept very secret until about 20 minutes before the meeting, when we seen maybe the photographs outside and the family with you. And it was great to see your family with you. So just to congratulate you, wish you all the best for your year ahead. And to you and Andrea and the children Alex, Cody and Billy, it's such a great opportunity to represent the borough. And I hope that the incoming 12 months of restrictions are relaxed a bit so that you can enjoy it the way that others have in the past. And I have no doubt you'll be a real advocate for your charities and also for the armed forces, as you've outlined, as the champion for armed forces here. On the council, I did attend an event that you organised in Bambridge last year. And it was a very well attended event and a great event to have. So I have no doubt that with the might of Susan and April behind you in the merge office, that you'll have some great events throughout as well. And so genuinely, I know we maybe had our differences in the past, but I genuinely set that aside and wish you and your family all the best for the next 12 months.
Thank you very much, Mark, for your kind words. Appreciate that. I'd like to call upon councillor Liam McCall.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. On behalf of myself and the Sinn Féin group, would like to wish you, Lord Mayor, well for your year in office. You have a massive challenge ahead as the borough moves beyond the pandemic and hopefully emerges bigger and better. I have no doubt you will be heavily supported by the Deputy Mayor and will be a first sizes for all the borough. So congratulations on your appointment, Glenn.
Thank you very much, Liam. I'd like to call upon councillor Thomas O'Hanlon.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and on behalf of the SDLP grouping, can I wish you and your family well in the year ahead? As someone who has filled the role of first citizen, it is a great honour to represent all our community in that office. And I know that whilst you're the second successive Lord Mayor from Bambridge, don't forget us in the capital of the council, as in Armagh City. So good luck in the year ahead and we wish you well.
Thank you very much, Thomas, for your kind words. And it would be remissness of me to welcome councillor Tolman, councillor O'Neill. I'm going to call upon councillor Brad Pope.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I would like to congratulate you on behalf of the Alliance Group. Over the last two years, I've known you on the Environmental Services Committee. And I'm sure that you'll bring a wide range of experience to this role. And of course, I'm pleased with the Bambridge DEA-related connection. I wish you every success in your year in office and especially relating to the continued economic recovery in the borough. Looking forward to working with you on the many challenges ahead. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Brad. I'd like to call upon councillor Barry.
Thank you, Mr. Lord Mayor. And could I also wish you all the very best for the year ahead? It's also going to be a challenging year, but I do believe that you're up for that challenge. And I do believe that you're capable and fit to provide out the leadership that will be required in the incoming year. So I would like to wish you, Andrea and your whole family, all the very best for the future. And I'm glad that Billy's here. And if we need to get a hot meeting going some night, well then obviously we'll call in Billy to sort it out.
He certainly will. Thank you very much, members, for your kind words. Going to move on to 4.2, the appointment of the Deputy Lord Mayor for the year 2021/22. I'm going to hand over to your chief executive for the second. Thank you, Lord Mayor. And can I, on behalf of all the staff, congratulate you on your appointment? As you say, the next appointment to be filled is that of Deputy Lord Mayor for the incoming year 21/22. And this year, the nomination goes to Sinn Féin. And I would call on the party's nominating officer, councillor McNally, to provide the nomination for the position.
Thank you, Chief Executive. As nominating spokesperson for Sinn Féin, I'm delighted to nominate a fellow Armagh councillor, a lady who shares a great love and passion of Gaelic sports and who is a tremendous community activist. Chief Executive, I'd like to propose councillor Jackie Donnelly for the role of Deputy Lord Mayor for the incoming year. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor McNally. Before councillor Donnelly comes up, I have skipped past the agenda. And there were some outgoing remarks from the outgoing Deputy Lord Mayor, my apologies, councillor Savage.
Lord Mayor, Alderman councillors and chief executive, you nearly short-circuited me there, but we'll let you away at this time. But first off, I'd like to thank my family, my wife Mary, my daughters Joanne, Felicity and Isabella, for all the support that they have given me over this last year. And really, as I say, there's behind every good man, there's always a stronger woman. So I want to thank them for that. I want to thank my party colleagues in the Ulster Unionist Party for giving me the support over this last year and giving me the opportunity to serve this great borough as Deputy Lord Mayor. And it's been a great honour and privilege for me to do so. So I thank you for that. And to Susan and April in the Lord Mayor's office. And to Susan and April in the Lord Mayor's office, probably took a while to get used to my timings, but in the end, I think they did, you know, clock our time. So I was usually running about half an hour behind. So it took them a wee while, but they got there in the end. So I want to thank them and be on record in doing that. Also, outgoing Lord Mayor, I want to pay tribute to him for the respect that he showed me as Deputy Lord Mayor. And I think we worked well together in what was a difficult year through the coronavirus and that. And the messages that was going out, joint messages from this council to the wider community was very much appreciated. And I think everybody took that on board too. So thank you. And I suppose we've been about, as a lot of you do know, I would be based heavily within community. That's what drives me. So it is through my work within Tadawra, support network and that. Very community orientated. And I see a lot of the issues there within our council borough. So it is around the mental health crisis and everything like that. And we do need to be doing a lot more to tackle that. And it's one thing that I'd like to see going forward, that we as a council group, we tackle that issue as best as we can. So, but I had the pleasure of visiting many groups and taking many groups, you know, listening to them and taking the time and spending the time with them. And I suppose there's one group that sticks out too, and that's Links Counseling in Lurgan. And whenever you hear the pressures that they are under, dealing with people, day-to-day issues within this borough, you know. I hear people talking about charity and all that, and it is commendable that we look after all charities. But sometimes charity begins at home and we've got to look after the most vulnerable people within our society and help and support as much as possible for that. I did have the pleasure of marking the centenary of Northern Ireland. It was a great honour for me to do so. And visiting a lot of groups right throughout Armagh City, Banbridge and Craigavon. And that was a great honour for me to do that. And also to mark the anniversary, the centenary of the Royal British Legion and for all the good work that they do throughout the area in supporting our ex-service personnel and many that are suffering at present with post-traumatic stress disorder. And that's something that I congratulate you, Lord Mayor. I know you'll take that on. That's one of the things that you will strive to try and help and support as much as possible. The other bit too, and I'd soon finish, and that is about business. The business sector that we have within this great borough. Whenever you're visiting businesses and they're expanding, wanting to expand and wanting to come to this area. As I move to the back benches, that's something that I've been keeping a close eye on because of the meetings that I've had over this last while. And whenever you hear the potential job gains for this borough, it's something I've been closely watching. So it is. And I hope that progress will be made on that. But again, I want to close by just thanking everybody for their support over this last year. And I look forward to working with you, Lord Mayor, and I congratulate you, Lord Mayor, and reaching the high office of Lord Mayor of Armagh City, Banbridge and Craigavon. So you have my full support and I look forward to working with you going forward. So thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you very much, councillor Savage. I would like to call upon Alderman Spears to say a few words.
Lord Mayor, may I, on behalf of the Ulster Unionist Party and indeed myself, say to the Deputy Lord Mayor or outgoing Deputy Lord Mayor, our very, very best thanks. We certainly, as a group, were particularly proud of you in the role that you carried out in a distinct manner, the dignified manner in which you exercised the role. You brought your unionism with you, but you stood above it in many ways and ensured out within this entire community. And that is to your credit and I thank you for it. It was, as it were, a difficult year. And I'm not so sure if it had have been a different year, how on the heavens' name, you would have got all the work done. Because I know the amount of work that you were involved in, I know the amount of outreach you were involved in. And if it had have been a normal year, it would have been exceptionally difficult, no doubt, till have added more miles to your clock, so to speak, in what you've done. But on behalf of us all, and indeed particularly the wider community, and I speak here not only on my own behalf or on behalf of the Ulster Unionist Party, but indeed I speak on behalf of the wider community in saying thanks to you for the role you played, the dignified manner in which you carried it out and the decorum that you brought to the office of Deputy Lord Mayor. And I wish you well in the coming days as you settle into a new way of life on the back benches. Thanks, Kyle.
Thank you very much, Alderman Spears. Going to call upon councillor Mark Baxter to say a few words.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. And can I just, can I, councillor Savage, wish you as you come back to the back benches? I've known you before, even you were on council and you were always a champion of the rural areas. And I think we had no doubt when you came in twelve months ago that that's really what you would set your stall on. And you've done that and you've championed it and you've done it as Alderman Spears says, with great decorum. Not only that, but the mental health issues and all the other issues that you've brought to the floor and with the chamber as well. It has been a difficult year. Maybe not the year that you would be expecting as Deputy Lord Mayor, but I think you've certainly thought, as I say, to box on certain things. And been able to deliver for the communities and for the community that you work for so hard throughout your term, even beforehand. So really just want to congratulate you on the year in office that you've had and to wish you well and to wish Mary well. And of course, Joanna, Isabella and Felicity as well as you go back. And I was going to say give a bit more of your time, but you're not a man, you're not a man for no one ever be in the house anyway. So I don't know if it'll be any different, but it's good to see even last night that you had one of the girls with you in some of the last events that you were doing. And you certainly crammed a lot into the last couple of weeks as well. So I congratulate you for doing it and thanks for your service too. And maybe saying I wish you well as you go back to the back benches. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Baxter. Going to call councillor Liam Michael for to say a few words.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. The Deputy Mayor has played a key role throughout this year. You've worked well with Kevin and you've been an excellent team. Kyle, you've been and will continue to be, I'm sure, a champion of the rural citizens of our borough. From a farming background, it's no surprise that the promotion of our important agriculture and agri-food sector has been a key priority for you while in office, while in the office of Deputy Mayor. I and my party would like to wish you all the very best as you return to the back benches and to thank you for your year in office. Thank you, Kyle.
Thank you very much, councillor Michael. Going to call councillor Thomas O'Halloran.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Councillor Savage, can we wish you all the best for the time ahead? And thank you for your term as Deputy Lord Mayor. I think like others who sat on any meeting over the last twelve months, it was nearly a book going to see how quick it would be to, councillor Savage referred to, the rural community. And as someone who is from and represents the rural community, it's something that is deeply appreciated. And sometimes it's often overlooked for the large areas of population and large areas of employment. So can I thank you for your continuous work in highlighting the work and the people from rural communities and wish you well in the term ahead? Thank you.
Thank you, councillor O'Halloran. Going to call upon councillor Brad Pope to say a few words.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I would like to thank the outgoing Deputy Lord Mayor for all your hard work during your term and particularly your support and contribution to the agri-food industry and rural community that has been settled ready. Having worked with you on the Economic Development and Regeneration Committee over the last year, I really appreciated your contribution, often vocal and robust support for the rural community and for our town centres and also for our local traders. So I wish you very well in getting back to the routine of your family after this extremely busy year. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Pope. I'm going to call upon councillor Barry.
Thank you very much, Lord Mayor. And could I also wish the Deputy Lord Mayor outgoing all the very best for the future? I would like to thank him for his leadership and dedication to this area over the past year. As others have said it, you've been a strong advocate for the farming community and the agri-food sector. But also you always focused very much on the mental health situation that we are in as a city and borough. And it was something that you always had shown passion towards, a very, very strong advocate on anything that you have done throughout the year. And I know from people that I've spoken to who have met you out and about and at different events that you could go to were very impressed with your ability and indeed your leadership at those particular events. So I would like to wish you well. And as the Lord Mayor has said, your late father, George, would be proud of you and would have been very proud to see you in that position for the year and how well you carried out that duty, similar that he had done on many occasions. So I'd like to wish you and your wife all the very best for the future. And I have no doubt that the various directors of the various departments now know that you're going to have more time to focus on those agriculture and rural issues in the future.
Thank you, councillor Barry.
Okay, members, we will now move to fill the position of Deputy Lord Mayor. And could I now invite councillor Donnelly to come forward and to sign the acceptance of office, councillor Donnelly?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you. Firstly, I'd like to thank my party colleague Sinn Féin for the nomination. Greatly appreciated. And I look forward to the year ahead, working alongside the incoming Lord Mayor. I'm very community orientated and look forward to working right across the borough and getting to know people in Banbridge and Craigavon also. Big thank you and congratulations to Kevin on a fantastic year, himself and Kyle. And big shoes to fill for both myself and Glen. So looking forward to working with everybody and that thank you again to our party. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Lord Mayor, and I hope I wish you well over the next year. Hopefully we get there from Covid nineteen and we fully excel. I'm going to invite councillor Liam Michael to say a few words.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. And councillor Donnelly as well, given you the council, having been elected for the first time in the council elections of twenty nineteen, just two years ago. She does however have a long record of community involvement and her and her family are also steeped in the local G A scene. Jackie is very much a people person and I have no doubt that in her role as Deputy Lord Mayor, she will resonate with all the citizens of the borough. She's very much an Armagh woman, but her love of the city and the county will not hinder her in serving all the citizens of the borough. First and foremost though, councillor Donnelly is family orientated. And her appointment tonight as Deputy Mayor will be cheered not only in Armagh, but across the Atlantic and Philadelphia, where a large contingent of the Donnelly clan reside. Jackie will reach out to all our communities. And as we emerge from the Covid pandemic to our new normal, I have no doubt that she will be a massive supporter of the new mayor and a real asset to the borough. My word, Jackie, and good luck for your years, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Michael. Going to call upon councillor Mark Baxter.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Can I just take this opportunity on behalf of the DUP to wish you well in the twelve months that lie ahead? You know, we trust and hope that, as I've said before previously with others, that the restrictions are relaxed, that you can go out and you see your community orientated, councillors will get out into those communities and have the opportunity to bring communities in to the palace and all those things and all those opportunities that do come along with the position. So I wish you well and your family well for the incoming year. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Baxter. Alderman Spears going to call you.
Lord Mayor, may I say, on behalf of the Ulster Unionist grouping, a word of congratulations. I have no doubt the Deputy Lord Mayor will be fully aware that her politics and mine would be poles apart. And, but I do know that she's an Armagh woman and Armagh has always been very, very much part of my life and part of my heart. And in that context, I have no doubt that there are things that we can do right across this borough that are in the interest of all our citizens. I would just appeal for a spirit of common sense, a spirit of some generosity in terms of how this community moves forward within this council. We are a key borough within Northern Ireland. I have no doubt we're, we'd say we're the second biggest. I wouldn't say that we're the second best. I would say that we are the best. And I think what we have, opportunities that can be, must be availed up. And I think that the role that the mayor and deputy mayor play in these things are key in many respects to the delivery of our aspirations for the wider community. And in that context, to yourself and indeed the Lord Mayor, I say a very sincere word of congratulations. Wish them well and take it, taking this borough forward in the way that we all aspire to in that spirit of generosity. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Alderman Spears. I'm going to call upon councillor Thomas O'Halloran to say a few words.
Thank you, Lord Mayor and Jackie. Or councillor Donnelly, can I wish you well in the year ahead? I suppose the contrast between our new Deputy Lord Mayor and the previous Deputy Lord Mayor couldn't be any different. We were one very much from the rural community and one very much steeped in Armagh City. So it's a great night for you and for your family and can I wish you well. I think councillor Michael referred to your connections to the Gaelic games. And I know in particular camogie is a big part of your life. So hopefully, maybe during this year, we'll have another chance to get the camogs in. So look, I wish you well during your year ahead. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor O'Halloran. Going to call upon councillor Brad Pope to say a few words.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. On behalf of the Alliance Group, I wish to congratulate the incoming Deputy Lord Mayor and wish you well for your year in office and for supporting the Lord Mayor in all the various duties that need to be undertaken. I look forward to working with you and wish you all the best in the year ahead. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Pope. Going to call councillor Barry.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. And could I also wish the Deputy Lord Mayor all the very best in the year ahead? Obviously, there'll be many challenges that both of yous will face, but I believe it's important that together, in unity, it will help to move our communities forward in our economic development, which will be going ahead. So I think it's important that we have a good progressive team. And I would like to wish you all the very best in your year in office. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Barry. We're going to move on to four point three, the appointment of other positions of responsibility. I'm going to ask our chief executive to present this report.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Members, the next item of business, as you've said, is the appointment of the remaining positions of responsibilities, namely the chair and vice chairs of our committees. Appendix one details the names of the councillors. And Lord Mayor, it's really just to seek the formal adoption and agreement of members to those positions. If members are happy to agree. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you very much. Going to move on to agenda item five, appointment to committees. Can chief executive?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Yes, again, members will have received a copy and breakdown of the appointments to the committees. And similar to the last item, it's to seek members' agreement and approval to those appointments for the incoming year. If members are happy to agree. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Agenda item six, if any correspondence?
Lord Mayor, we have no item of correspondence.
Any agenda items having any relevant business?
Lord Mayor, we have no. Lord Mayor, we haven't been notified of any other relevant business.
Members, thank you very much. I look forward to working with you all throughout the next twelve months. And hopefully we can invigorate our economy and our businesses and our communities to where it was pre-COVID and to make it even better than it was pre-COVID. So thank you very much and look forward again to working with you. Safe home.